Please, Ms. Madlin, would you please take a roll?
Councilmember Craven?
Here.
Councilmember Santangelo?
Here.
Councilmember Mulchay?
Present.
Vice Mayor Tremblay?
Here.
Mayor Kildee?
Here.
Ms. Santangelo, would you please lead us in the flex unit tonight?
Hand of heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Amendments to this agenda?
No amendments.
We're down to item two, is public comments. I do have one public comment card from a Matt Lormer. Make sure I have the microphone on for you. Matt, yes, I do. Welcome.
And I know the three-minute rule. Good evening.
And I won't say anything.
I know. Good evening, City Council and members of the public at home. So I was really impressed to see that Park District, hopefully they move forward with concerts in the park and the city, you guys working together. And I know the city manager in the back room, if you were a public figure, he laid out how other cities don't do it and how some of them do it and some of them charge. So I think it's important that we continue that process. And you know something? We're one city. And it's good to see, working with the Park District is going to be a really positive thing. I hope they're willing, and it seems like they are, to do that. I know it'll be cut down from seven to four possibly. Who knows how things change from that point, but that's really good. Another thing I want to talk about is pension reform. It's, I know we have like $35 million issues regarding the city owes in pensions. I think we've got to talk about a contribution plan for the city. I know we just hired a person for about $200,000. It seems like we're hiring a lot of people to city. Again, even though we're getting more money from developers, a city will get older at some point and see our upgrades along with infrastructure because the city has grown and it is growing quite a bit. And in 30 years from now, when you guys are not here, hopefully we have a process that we kind of overhaul because I think it's time because cities across Ventura County and across California need to start thinking about that. And I'm not saying the current staff people should be cut off. No, I wouldn't do that because that's not right. I think it should start at least three years. If you've worked for the city a minimum of three years, I think you should be part of that plan where you have to pay into it and the city, you know, needs to really look at that because the costs are going up across the nation, so, including this city. And even though you're getting extra money, it's something really important to think about. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I don't have any more blue cards or anybody else like to address the council? Okay, that moves us. I'm going to jump around a little bit. We'll get back to the closed session here, but if we could go to item four, the consent calendar, at least get that dealt with.
I have the approval.
Second.
There's a motion and a second for the consent calendar, and that's the minutes in the financial reports. Any further discussion hearing none, please vote. That passes unanimously. So we're going to get back now to the closed session. Counselor, would you like to say the magic words for the reasons we're going to go into closed session?
Yes, I will. There'll be a conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D2. The number of potential cases is two.
Okay, so it looks like these are some pretty packed closed sessions. So I just want everybody to know it's probably going to be a couple hours before we come back. Counselor, we have any announcements after the closed session?
I don't expect there to be any announcements.
Okay, so I just want everybody to know that it's probably going to be a couple hours before we get back. So with that, we're going to recess and we're going to go into closed session. Didn't quite realize we had public comments at the first part of this agenda, so my feeling is to let the individual come up and have her three minutes, and she'd agreed to keep it for three minutes. So I'm going to ask Barbara Williams to please come up, and I'm going to turn on the mic. Oh, the microphone isn't on Barbara, and welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Advisory Committee for the Development of the Homes on the Camrio Springs Golf Course has been encouraging people to contact you to show their support for New Urban West's plans for developing the golf course. Please be aware that this is just marketing on behalf of New Urban West to use members of the community to do their bidding, which has been done each time Mr. Richards and Mr. Sussinger wanted to develop homes on golf courses in Escondido, Chino Hills, and many other locations. On September 27th, 2017, the council was given the impression the majority of the Camrio Springs community was supportive of the development. They had professionals create that impression by providing free T-shirts and signs as well as providing a bus to the meeting. The support was staged, and therefore supporters outnumbered those of us who opposed. They even had Ron Kester, a resident, speak on their behalf, and he wasn't limited to three minutes that the opposition was limited to. All this gives me the impression that the developers can't get approval based on their own merits, but they have to prey upon the fears of residents impacted. They bought a golf course green space and are not entitled to have it rezoned for homes. At the January 23 meeting, when the referral will be addressed, you have the opportunity to stop this now. If you do not, Camrio will become another notch on their gun like the other communities where the property owners have bullied those communities and where the courts took over and neither the people nor the communities' desires made any difference. I know the city of Camrio will not put up with closing the course and putting up a chain-link fence and letting the golf course become an eyesore. I know the city won't put up with the owners covering the golf course with stinky manure to force concessions. We have the benefit of hindsight with regards to the Camrio Springs community. We now know that cutting off the historic alluvial fans and building homes where the historic flows went proved to be disastrous. We now know that the Springs fire didn't protect us-
Barbara, I got to cut you off. I'm sorry. Can you wrap it up real quick?
Yeah, it didn't protect us from future fires such as a hill fire. The city of Camrio has spent a lot of money in the Camrio Springs, and so problems associated with homes and the golf course, the city's not going to like that. I spoke before the previous council about my opinion regarding the modeling not being valid and proving that flooding could be taken care of. I also told you about the traffic that we had during our evacuation for the hill fire. This time, those opposing the development of homes at the Camrio Springs Golf Course will let you know, we do not support the plans, and we want you to withdraw your support for the referral now before it becomes a legal issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, so that gets us down to item five. It's departmental. We have a staff report for the North Pleasant Valley Desalter. Who is going to take that one?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I will take that presentation and begin with a little bit of background on our desalter project, beginning with the description of the underlying groundwater basins in the Camrio area. Largely, the Pleasant Valley groundwater basin underlies the vast majority of the city of Camrio. The Los Poses groundwater basin lies to the north with the dividing line arcing through the Heights area. In the late 1990s and early 2000s, increased levels of salts were detected in city wells A and B, which are located up by the hospital area off of Los Poses and Antonio. With that information and eventual testing and modeling indicated that there was a salt plume of brackish water which originated from subsurface flows from Caiaguas Creek. And Caiaguas Creek courses through the city over here to the east portion of that salt plume that was identified. And those flows are surface flows that originate out of Simi Valley and then through Moore Park. The Simi Valley groundwater discharge, their treatment plant, the county's treatment plant in Moore Park discharges into the Arroyo, which then becomes the Caiaguas Creek. And this brackish water continues down and eventually goes subsurface in the Caiaguas Creek a little bit northeast of Camrio and then has subsurface impacted the groundwater table, creating this salt plume that's been verified by monitoring and testing. In response to that, in the early portion of the 2000s, the Caiaguas Creek was listed by the EPA as what's called an impaired water body under the 303D listing of water bodies that are impaired for various reasons. This impairment was specifically due to high salt concentrations. In response to that, a total maximum daily load was issued for salt by the Regional Water Quality Control Board, and that was issued for the entire Caiaguas Creek watershed, which includes both the Caiaguas Creek and the Conejo Creeks. There are wastewater dischargers that discharge into both of those creeks, and the TMDL established limits on salt levels allowable to be discharged by these wastewater treatment plants. So the TMDL came into effect, and the salts in Camrio's water supply, those levels make it impossible for our discharge from our treatment plant to meet the TMDL limits. So to move forward, a time schedule order was negotiated with the regional board, and that time schedule order includes some specific elements and milestones and completion dates involved, all for the purpose of achieving reduction in salts in the Caiaguas watershed. Two of those specific elements of the implementation plan, one being with the requirement to eliminate our wastewater treatment plant discharge to the Conejo Creek, thereby removing the introduction of additional salts into the watershed. And one of the byproducts of that is essentially creating our recycled water program. So currently, our treatment plant processes on average three and a half million gallons a day, and our discharge into the creek is roughly about a million gallons a day. We convey about two and a half million gallons a day to agriculture and landscape users of recycled water. The other element of the implementation plan for the time schedule order and to satisfy achieving the TMDL is to treat the source groundwater. And essentially, this was the birth of the desalter project, to treat that brackish groundwater at the source, remove the salts, and that also has the net effect of improving our recycled water quality also. The implementation plan did include an element that's needed for the effectiveness of being able to have desalters is when you remove the salts out of the groundwater, then you have a brine that's left over that needs to be discharged somewhere. And that identified the need for what we call the brine line. It's a salinity management pipeline that Caiaguas Municipal Water District initiated the installation of that brine line. They're starting with an ocean outfall out off of Port Huanimi. The pipeline continues on through the county and eventually coming up Lewis Road and up Lewis Road and on into the unincorporated county out on the 118. So there was several elements to the TMDL and the time schedule order identifying these items to be implemented to achieve the salt reduction. In the testing and monitoring, the area was identified as to the eligibility for where best to pump the brackish groundwater to be treated. And this area shown in the orangish was identified as the eligible area for groundwater extractions, and our wells are right in that area. Wells A and B qualify to serve as source wells for treatment. So the, again, the birth of the desalter project came about by identifying the salt plume and the ability to use our extraction wells there to treat the brackish groundwater for reuse. The time schedule order comes with deadlines that were established on the onset, and they've been extended several times. The current deadline for compliance with the time schedule order is December 31st of this year. We have been in contact and are working with the regional board for an extension of that, and what the regional board has indicated is that they are willing to extend the deadline for awarding the contract for the desalter, which is currently set at December 31st of this year, extending that by one month for award of a contract by January 31st of 2019. The other element of requirement to reduce or to remove the discharge into the Conejo Creek from our wastewater treatment plant, it takes some regulatory permit adjustments that the regional board needs to put into place, and they are anticipating approving an extension of that requirement to June 30 of 2019. So those are the elements of regulatory requirements that are affecting us here in Camrio, and the desalter has been identified as a major step towards reaching the requirements of the total maximum daily load for salts in the Caiaguas Creek watershed. Some additional project history on the desalter, starting back and again in the early 2000s, and it'll take us up to present. Extensive groundwater supply studies were performed. The city then embarked on a feasibility study looking at various treatment options to treat the brackish groundwater, and reverse osmosis was identified as the most feasible treatment option. The city then initiated a small-scale pilot test of reverse osmosis treatment. So it was a miniature treatment plant that was set up at the location of our well A off of Los Poses near Antonio. That was completed and successfully identifying that reverse osmosis would be effective in treating our groundwater. The full analysis of our groundwater quality, all the constituents were considered, and an outcome of that was a development of a proposed facilities plan, which essentially laid out a conceptual design and the required treatment process to effectively treat the brackish groundwater. With the completion of that, the decision was made to move forward with the desalter project. The initial idea was a regional-type approach since the Caiaguas Creek watershed includes other dischargers such as Simi Valley, Thousand Oaks, and the county. The idea was for a regional approach, and a sequel process was started and eventually ended up with an EIR and two supplemental EIRs to get us to where we are today that have been certified. That also required approval from Fox Canyon Groundwater Management Agency for a pumping allocation, another lengthy process that included the regional approach that eventually or initially started out at looking at pumping up to 9,000 acre-feet per year. The regional approach didn't pan out with the other agencies involved, and the city continued on and worked through a process with Fox Canyon, including a very strict monitoring and contingency plan to verify into the future that there will be no impacts to the groundwater basin by pumping this additional 4,500 acre-feet per year. If impacts are identified, then there's trigger points that scale back the level of pumping that we're allowed to do out there. So with that allocation approved, the sequel process finalized, the decision was made to take the next step and start selecting a design engineer for the 4,500 acre-foot desalter project and also start with the site selection to locate the plant. After all other possible sites were determined to be infeasible, the site selection process was focused on the area around Rancho Comptan High School. The first site that was analyzed here in negotiations with the Auction Art Union High School District proceeded, which the district owns the majority of the property up and around the high school. And this location was selected due to its close proximity to the two wells and also for the ease of access off of Antonio Drive. Because of the sensitivity to the adjacent residential neighborhood, the facility design concept included architecture to blend in with the residential area, screen wall and sound attenuation measures to minimize visual and noise impacts. Also, since we were coordinating with the school district, as far as the purchase of the project goes and its proximity to the school, there was an educational element, educational center and meeting room element that was included in the administration building design. With mounting concerns over the project from nearby residents, from the residential area here on Antonio and then up on the hill above North Ponderosa, those mounting concerns led to the evaluation of another site shown in this square, still on the school district property just north of the high school. The architecture, wall, and sound attenuation concepts were retained at the new site. Negotiations with the school district fell apart, leading to the final site on the Meyerstein property, which is highlighted here in yellow, and that five acres was purchased earlier this year along with the required easements for access out to Lewis Road along with a temporary construction easement. The initial design of the project had begun, and the design concepts were retained for the architecture, the solid block wall, perimeter wall, and sound attenuation concepts within the plant. Those were all retained at this new site also. So the site is here, and the source water comes from the two wells with the blue line indicating the pipeline necessary to get the source water from the wells over to the desalter site. And then the treated water will connect out into the water system out on Los Poses Road, and the brine line connection is here. The discharge of the brine from the treatment process would connect into the existing brine line out in Lewis Road. City Council recently approved an agreement with Pleasant Valley Mutual Water Company, who has a well field and facilities located here off of North Ponderosa, just north of Los Poses, and they intend and have gaining the necessary approvals for construction of their own groundwater desalinization reverse osmosis plant, and they need a discharge into the brine line also. And so the city is under agreement with them, with Pleasant Valley, to incorporate the design and construction of what's in the dashed yellow line of the brine line to discharge the Pleasant Valley waste from their desalter in the brine line that would continue on in the same alignment as our source water pipelines and discharge out into the brine line connection in Lewis Road. So the agreement is that Pleasant Valley Mutual will pay 100% of all the design and construction costs related to their brine discharge pipeline, and it would be incorporated into our design and construction efforts. It will be very cost-effective and minimize impacts, one-time construction in the road of putting in both the pipelines at the same time. That's an outline of the desalter project components and design proceeded utilizing brown of Caldwell's. Our design engineers hired in August of 2017 along with several other consultants that the city has utilized for project management, along with the property acquisition and legal services that we've utilized to get to this point. The design has been recently completed in September of this year, 2018, a very aggressive schedule for design of a treatment plant of this magnitude in roughly a year. And the design layout on a bare piece of previously agricultural land has allowed us to design the project in the most efficient way possible with access off of Lewis Road and then into a circulation drive and loops around the treatment plant with the administration building located here at the front near the entrance on the eastern portion of the project. And there's a perimeter wall designed all the way around the project. It's an eight-foot tall perimeter wall on top of some mounding, so it'll give quite a bit of screening and sound attenuation. And some representative examples of the type of equipment that we have in the plant, where the source water comes in here in the northwest corner and first is treated through filters to remove quite a bit of the existing constituents in the water to be able to make the reverse osmosis treatment most effective. So these are pressure filters. That's what that equipment will look like. We have a washwater recovery system that'll look similar to this. This is a picture of an existing agency's reverse osmosis treatment plant, part one of the train or skid of reverse osmosis membranes in these long cylindrical pipes and housed within a building. That's what we'll be going here, a completely housed building with the reverse osmosis equipment. And then chemicals are needed for the process, and there'll be a chemical facilities storage building and with tanks underneath a canopy area for trucks to pull up and safely hook up and fill up the tanks when needed. This is an inside view of a similar existing installation where the tanks are located and in fully contained areas that would contain any leaks or spills of the chemicals, and they're segregated to keep different chemicals separate as needed. And then this is a rendering, actually a picture of an actual pump station. Once everything, all the water's treated, it will then need to be pumped out into our water system in Los Poses Road. Here's a conceptual view based on the design of the plant from Lewis Road, showing the administration building here, the block wall, and continuing all the way around the project. This is a view looking from near the intersection of Los Poses and Lewis, elevated view or aerial looking out into the plant. This is the chemical storage canopy covering that. The reverse osmosis building enclosure is back here. The finished water pump station is here. Another view exactly diagonal from that, looking if you were above the high school parking lot into the, looking southeast, a good shot of the reverse osmosis building, everything contained within that building. This is the source water comes in here. We have tanks for storage and distribution to the plant. The pressure filters are over here, some of the other equipment shown there. And then this is if you're on the ground from the high school, looking at the screening that's going to be provided by the eight-foot block wall that's been designed along with landscaping. Another view directly from the east, this would be if you're hovering up over the church and looking east, and another view of the components that are going to make up the plant. So it's to give an idea of what this plant will look like with the different equipment. So as I mentioned before, the administration building, architecture and layout and provisions for educational center and conference room were retained throughout the design and in consideration for the different sites that were analyzed. The administration building is roughly 6,500 square feet and has shown with a control room, there's a laboratory, and then entry lobby way here. The educational center was set up here to be able to be outfitted with information and materials, could be set up in a classroom setting, but essentially to be able to share the message with groups that could tour about the supply of water, both locally in Camrio, regionally, and statewide. Room for conference room and offices were provided, restrooms, office space, storage space, and a shop were incorporated in the administration building, and that's a rendering of the elevation. The conditional use permit for the project was recently approved by the planning commission. After a two-month bidding period and with many requests for information with eight addenda to the notice inviting bids, bids were finally opened on December 4. As listed here, we had four bidders, and the apparent low bidder is Parsons from Pasadena, California, with an amount of bid of $44,234,000. Bid protests have been received from William L. Lyles and AECom. I wanted to review with our bids being opened, the estimated cost of the project and comparing what was presented at Council and Study Session in August with, now with the bids, bid received by Parsons, including 10% contingency on that, and then also there's some additional cost increases for other elements of the project. And so in August, the total project cost estimate, and this is all elements of the project, the treatment facility, the pipelines, there's a storm drain, it's our connection to the brine line. We need to rehabilitate wells A and B to get full production out of them. We need, we're planning for an additional production well to be able to maintain full production of the 4,500 acre-feet per year, so an additional production well that could be used when another, another well is out of service. We have monitoring wells that are required as part of the approval from Fox Canyon Groundwater Management Agency, an extensive monitoring and testing and reporting process on analyzing the groundwater basin to make sure there's no detrimental impacts to the pumping of the water for treatment here. So initially, three monitoring wells were identified as needed and utilizing another existing well on the seminary property. Our analysis and investigation by a contractor of that well has rendered it not to be able to be used as a monitoring well, so we do need to install another monitoring- to be used as a monitoring well, so we do need to install another monitoring well at a location yet to be determined. So, there's some additional cost included there. Our project management and design engineer during construction services and a construction management contract will need to be issued, originally estimated at $4 million. Now that we've gone through the process of identifying, based on our final design, the actual needs of that, we estimate an additional $2 million needed for that. The next slide, I've summarized the increases from August to December this year, going from the $54 million total cost of the project to the now $70 million total. And in summary, they're listed here as an increase in the treatment facility itself, including contingency is the difference of $11,400. The design efforts needed to complete the project at an additional $200,000. The land purchase costs, we've already purchased the five acres. There is additional costs included in reaching that conclusion. And we're continuing to pursue an easement from the church to the west, and there's additional costs that will be included with that. The pipeline cost, the original estimate was created before design was completed. Now that we're getting closer to the completion of design of the pipelines, which is a separate package, will be bid and awarded and constructed separately from the treatment facility contract. We now know and estimate an additional $400,000 needed for the pipeline improvements. There are additional improvements on the site that design hadn't been completed yet. We are under the deadline of the December 31, 2018, to award a contract. And as I mentioned, the design schedule was extremely aggressive and pursued and developed to achieve a bid package for the treatment facility to award by the end of this year. There are a couple other items that still need to be designed finalized, including the ultimate improvements to Lewis Road, which were under review with Caltrans for approval of that. There's a surge mitigation improvement that needs to be designed and installed to make sure we're not negatively impacting our existing water system, an onsite sewer system for a total increase of expected costs there, $600,000. The additional monitoring well that I mentioned, additional cost of $800,000. And then that $2 million total in additional consultant services. And those are our estimated costs for those services through the duration of the project, which is estimated to be a total of 24 months, two years from start of contract, issuance of contract to completion and delivery of treated water. Go back. So, this is a summary of desalter costs and funding at different periods in time. And starting first in the first column with what has been adopted in our CIP fiscal year 1819 CIP budget and reflecting the total project cost at the time of the development of that CIP, which was early last year before design was very well underway and the cost estimate was not finalized. The total project cost that was included in the budget was $37,455,000. And then as design progressed and further information became known on what our total costs were going to be for the project, the estimate that was presented at study session with council in August of 2018 had the total cost of $54 million as shown here. And then a summary breakdown of the total costs currently estimated at that total of $70 million. On the funding side of things, the existing budget includes funding of the $37,455,000 made up of capital and unrestricted water funds. And two grants that we've secured, the Prop 1 grant for $10 million and the Prop 84 grant for $5 million. And we do have an application in for a federal grant through the U.S. Bureau of Reclamation. And the maximum amount of grant we anticipate out of that is almost $13 million. And we're waiting to, still waiting to hear on the award and the total dollar amount of that grant. So, when the $54 million total was presented in August of 2018 for the funding, we're showing the options for funding that additional money. The budget hasn't been changed at all, but what we're projecting for, what we projected for the $54 million was an additional $8 million total in capital, water fees, and unrestricted water funds that are shown to be available over the next five years in our projections of the water fund. So, that's an additional $8 million of water funds there, the existing $10 million and $5 million in the grants, resulting in a net difference in 8.5 million. And so, that's what would be needed either from the federal grant. If that's, if we get that much out of the grant, that would have satisfied that difference there. Or if not, a combination with a lower amount of grant with a loan possibly from the general fund or a different funding source for a loan. With our existing current cost estimate of a total project cost of $70 million, in updating the forecast and look ahead for the available water funds, there is $9 million that can be budgeted towards the project. And so, that's been added in here in the water funds. And again, the $10 million and $5 million in the grants, leaving a delta of additional funds needed of $23,500,000. And that could be, if the grant comes in, a portion, or the grant could cover a portion of that cost, or we'd be needing to looking at a bond issuance or a loan, either from general fund or a low interest rate water infrastructure type loan. So, the net difference between what's budgeted now, 37, essentially 37.5, and the $70 million is $32.5 million. Again, $9 million of that being satisfied out of the use of water funds and $23.5 million needed in a financing mechanism. So, with those new cost estimate of the $70 million, what we've done is updated the projection of the cost of water. This had been previously presented at council also in August, based on the $54 million total capital cost. It's been updated to reflect the $70 million, and these calculations are based on that total capital cost and the projected operations and maintenance costs and all of that to produce the 3,800 acre feet of water per year for a 20-year period. The 20-year period is what's been identified as, and through Fox Canyon Groundwater Management Agency, as the period that's expected to have definitely no impact to pumping the 4,500 acre feet a year. So, we've, excuse me, we've been using the 20-year period for these calculations. And we've shown two columns for these total cost comparisons and the savings based on with receiving no federal grant, which we don't expect that to be the case. We expect to receive something from the federal grant, it's just a matter of how much. But worst case is no federal grant and then with the full grant funding of almost $13 million. So, capital costs are shown at $55 million with no grant funding. That's the $70 million less $15 million in existing grants. Our initial annual maintenance costs are estimated at just over $3 million. All that information is taken and calculated out for the 20 years to show a total desalter cost of water per acre foot of $1,973. This includes escalators in the operation, the maintenance costs of 3% a year. And it also includes the capital cost, oh, and the cost of financing also is all included in there. And when we compare that 1973 with the 1,528 cost, current cost of imported water that we buy from Cuyahoga Municipal Water District, we see there being a difference there. And there is a mechanism available through Metropolitan Water District to cover that cost differential, and it comes through a program called the Local Resources Program. Metropolitan Water District has established this program and it's effectuated, would be effectuated us through Cuyahoga Municipal Water District, who is our direct wholesaler. And essentially, the gist of the program is Metropolitan has set up a, essentially a funding mechanism to encourage the development of additional water resources within their jurisdiction. And so, what would happen is we'd enter into an agreement with Metropolitan and Cuyahoga, a joint agreement that it says if it costs more for Camrio to produce water through our desalter than it would for Cuyahoga to buy that water from Metropolitan, Metropolitan Water District will commit over the life of the project to reimburse that amount of difference in cost up to $350 per acre foot. So, our calculations show that our cost of desalter water is higher in total than the imported, current imported cost of water and the projected cost of imported water, generating total savings over the 20 years of $22.6 million. And essentially, this Local Resources Program is a revenue stream annual based on actual cost of water. It's a reporting and documentation process that happens annually, and it essentially acts as a revenue stream from Metropolitan to offset that additional cost to develop our, a new source, additional source of water that then would offset the amount of imported water that we would buy. So, there's the $22.6 million essential savings by realizing the Local Resources Program. And then our cost of water for desalter does not go up as high every year as what's projected for the Cuyahoga Municipal Water District water, this imported water that we buy. The escalator that is currently in place for the imported water is 4%, so we've applied that to the 1,528 over each year. And that generates a total cost of imported water minus the total cost of desalter water each year. It generates a savings, a total savings over 20 years of nearly $23 million. Those two added together with no grant, federal grant funding, at the total cost of $70 million of the entire project, it's expected to generate a savings of $45.5 million using desalter water as opposed to buying the same amount of water through the 3,800 acre feet of imported water. And then with the, if we realize the total grant of almost $13 million, the total net savings would increase up to $62 million. So, essentially, that, like I mentioned, that Local Resources Program creates a revenue stream that pretty well in our calculations offsets the cost of financing that would be needed to make up that difference between the, for that $23 million, $23.5 million needed in additional budget. So, this is a more detailed spreadsheet showing the annual calculation that's shown again without the grant and with the grant, with our, starting with our cost of desalter water, our LRP revenue that drops that cost. And then compared to the imported water, that's the difference that we calculate each year to end up with this total savings of $45.5 million and the same calculation we performed here under the scenario of the grant. So, the initial cost of water goes down, not quite as much LR, Local Resources Program revenue, since that cost differential is a little bit less because the grant lowers the total cost of water. But yet, against the 4% increase of imported water each year, netting that total savings of $62 million a year. So, in summary, I want to touch on the benefits of the desalter project, which have been identified quite a few years ago and is the baseline for why Camrio has continued to pursue this project. The desalter treats an unusable source of water, enhancing long-term supply stability and reduces dependence on costly imported water. This is a major step towards compliance with regional salts, TMDL specifically, an item in the implementation plan. It also fully reuses our impaired wells A and B, which right now we're pumping very minimally from because of the high levels of salts in the water. It needs to be blended quite heavily with the imported water for use. And finally, the overall lower cost of water reduces future escalation in the overall cost to provide water. So, in developing the 3,800 acre feet of water at how much lower, lower cost, just has an overall reduction effect and less escalation in overall cost in the future to provide water. So, some next steps have been identified based on the overall total cost and also, and those are based on the existing bids that we received that came in significantly higher than our original estimate. And, wrong way. Is a look at the possible redesign options. And one of those is to replace the perimeter block wall with a less expensive fence, say a chain link type slatted fence for privacy and screening. A reduction in the size of the administration building could be looked at in redesign. The existing design we moved forward, as I mentioned, the original groundwater modeling showed that the basin could be pumped up to a total of 9,000 acre feet per year, and that was the initial request and process through Fox Canyon for that 9,000 acre feet per year, which eventually was scaled back in half to gain approval of that allocation. But it could be a possible expansion to the 9,000 in the future. So, our current design does include the sizing of the underground components of the plant, some pipelines, some storage tanks, to be able to accommodate that higher capacity of 9,000 acre feet per year. So, it could look at reducing the size of those components. And staff's not recommending that in that the extensive amount of redesign that's necessary to do that for a marginally low amount of cost savings expected makes it not recommended. Another element that could be looked at is to remove or reduce the lead certification level. The architecture and the administration building and site design has been, been a goal of the city to achieve lead silver on that, and the project has been designed accordingly. And again, the reduction of that's not recommended. The lead certification has, have been elements of our grant applications that achieve positive effect on our scoring and success in achieving the grant. So, we don't want to incur any, or jeopardize the receipt of those grant funds by changing the lead certification. So, since the time that we've received the bids and obviously higher than expected, we've taken a look at these options and there will come a cost with those, to achieve those options, a redesign in the staff report. And here it just summarized a real rough estimate to achieve all that redesign could possibly cost up to $500,000 and then plus other project management costs to see that redesign through. So, those are some of the options of redesign options. And then we've summarized options for action tonight for the council. And one would be to reject all bids received and authorize the city manager to execute an amendment to the agreement with Brown and Caldwell for a not-to-exceed amount of $500,000 for redesign of the project. And that would then fold into a eventual rebid of the project. Or another option is to reject all bids received and direct staff to return to the city council for consideration of an amendment to the agreement with Brown and Caldwell for redesign of the project as directed by council. So, a direction of the different possible redesign efforts that could then be further identified in a more specific scope of work from Brown and Caldwell with the associated cost to do that with a better degree of accuracy to present to council for consideration. Or the other option is action as determined appropriate by the city council tonight. That concludes my report and be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Council? Okay, there are no questions. I do have, did I miss somebody?
No, not this time.
Okay. I do have a couple of public comment cards, and I'm going to call you up as they were submitted to me. First is Jeff Axel. Jeff here? Jeff?
I'm Jeff Axel. I'm with Parsons. I'm with Parsons and I submitted a public comment card just to make myself available if there were any questions about potential areas in the, in the bid or any questions about what made up any part of it. I just wanted to make myself available if the council had any questions and that was it.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions from council? Not at this moment. Thank you. Next, we've got Matt Lorimer. Matt?
Well, I remember this project. It was supposed to be 30 million, three to six million over and now we're talking 70 million. There's some questions I have about this project. It's going to provide 40% more water, obviously. Employee cost, are this is going to be 100% contract labor or is there going to be any employees involved and how much will pension cost cost? Because if you have to hire engineers, what will that cost? I think that's important. Everybody wants to save money, but I keep hearing a key phrase, additional costs. Are we going to be up to 100 million, 120 million, 140 million? I mean, seriously, it keeps going up. Every time this changes, we keep hearing additional costs. I remember a time when American Water wanted to do this and they said, oh, no, no, the cities needs to run it. The question is, at the cost factor this keeps going up, is it time to consider a private contractor negotiate and let them run it and walk away from this? Because this is a lot of money and we don't have any defined costs. We're not, I mean, we've gone from 30 to 70 and then they say, well, we can reduce costs by get, maybe reducing a classroom. But then we go back to the key phrase again, additional costs. What does that mean? Does that mean millions of more dollars? Does that mean the price of steel goes up? And by the way, the stock market's been tanking. We might go into recession. So how much will it cost to borrow additional costs? Do you guys have an estimate on that? You know, it's concerning. I know the city's looking at this as saving money, but could we be getting ourselves in a trap? Look at Santa Barbara. I know it's a different plant, but when their plant, this has a 20-year lifecycle supposedly. If this was such a valid project, how come we're not seeing more cities do this kind of project? There's a lot of questions that still need to be answered. You know, do you have all these contracts now that we're rejecting? You know why? Because there's additional costs that we're not aware of and they're now all these contractors go, well, they left this out, they left that out. What is the contract called for? How much of an increase will we see when they start building this and they come back and go, hey, guys, it's going to be $20 million more? You guys remember the phrase, no new taxes. Read my lips. That was the president that said that. I think you should go on record and say, read my lips. I guarantee you this is not going to go over 70 million. Is anybody, councilman want to make that commitment or anybody in the staff corner here would like to make that commitment? I think it's important that we get a handle on expenses, okay? Because this is not, there's some problems here, folks. And I think there's a lot of answers that need to be answered. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I do not have any more blue cards or anybody else like to address the council on this issue? Okay. So are there any questions to staff or does staff have anything more to add to the discussion tonight? Ms. Tremblay?
Yeah, I've got some.
Yeah. Won't you proceed if you would?
I'd be happy to have some questions.
Sure.
So let me start with, let me start with you, Mr. Clotzel. So we have obviously a very substantial escalation in project costs and I need, I need to have some confidence in these numbers. I understand the comments that have been made and I think it is important to get a handle on the expenses. I think it's also important to have some clarity regarding going forward as to what those expenses would be. And this is notwithstanding, I'm not speaking right now to the bid protest issues. Deal with that a little bit later. So can you back up to the slide that is entitled, Summary of Estimated Project Cost Increases From August 28? I want to focus on two of those, Mr. Clotzel. Can you work through with me why the treatment facility cost increased by $11.4 million? And let me tell you, when I read the staff report, it appears that in August of 2018, there was approximately a $32.3 million estimated cost for the treatment facility. And I know that based on the preliminary opinion of probable construction cost by Brown and Caldwell, that number was at 38, almost 38.1 million, but let's deal with the numbers on this sheet. At 32.3 million, do I then add in the contingency costs of 4.8 million to get to about, what is it, about 37 million? I'm trying to understand.
Yes.
And then do I take, how do I do the math here? Do I take that 37 million then if I, if I add in the numbers on, I'm on big page five, colleagues, under the August 2018 estimated cost? Do I add the $32.3 million to, and the $4.8 million of the contingency? That, that nets me about 37 million, right? And is the difference between that 37 million and the 48.6 million in the December 2018 estimated cost, is that the $11 million that we're talking about up there on the screen? Why so much more?
So.
Just bottom line.
Right.
Why, why such a large increase?
Right. A large portion of that is due to the actual bid cost that was received compared to the engineer's estimate that was included at the time in the August 2018 cost estimate there. So that's where the, you're correct, the 32 million plus the 4 million total. And then less, the number there, the 48.6 is the Parsons bid plus a 10% contingency on that and that difference is that 11, 11,400. So essentially it's the increase in, in cost of the bid versus the engineer's estimate.
Do we know why the engineer's estimate was so much lower than what the bid came out to be?
So, yeah, we, there is several possible factors into play on that. And one of them is the, the bidding climate that we're under right now and the variability of, of costs associated with that, with the existing bidding climate. The, the actual estimate that's shown here in the August table really should have reflected the more updated cost that was available right at that same time from, from Brown and Caldwell of 38 million would have, while still much lower than the actual bid, would have been a more accurate number to include at that point instead of the 32 plus the four, which is just a little bit less than that. But some of the review, well, put it this way, the, the bid documents are set up in such a way that the, the bid items are rather lump sum with major items of work, the admin building, the site work, the treatment plant. And so the, the admin building came in quite a bit higher than engineer's estimate. We see a, a large increase in that for, for some reason. Our design engineer, Brown and Caldwell, has analyzed that as best as possible. We don't have the details of the cost makeup of those bids at this point since they were lump sum items. But there is an indication in, in contact with contractors and the, and the, again, the bidding climate that's out there, especially for the specialty subcontractors having to do with the administration building for steel framing, for drywall, for plastering. Those costs, what the indication is, is that those trades are in extremely high demand and likely resulted in high costs for those elements of the bids.
But well, that, that's really high costs.
Right.
Substantial.
I wish to.
And the Brown Caldwell estimate, the 38 million was originally premised, I think, based on a 95% design.
Correct.
Am I correct? A 95% design.
Right.
Documents. And that was their opinion as to probable construction cost.
Correct.
And in there, they said, well, you need to add a 10% contingency in there. So you still have a substantial way, you still have a substantial discrepancy. Although, you know, the, interestingly enough, I mean, the bids themselves are relatively well, relatively well-grouped relative to one another. They are in the same rough ballpark, the four. Do you know why the, well, next question is on the consultant services. Can you explain why there's a $2 million increase?
Yes.
In consultant services?
Right. At the time of.
That's a huge number.
At the time of the previous estimate, we had $4 million allocated for that. And the, at that point, we hadn't finalized the scope of work because the design was still progressing. We hadn't finalized the scope of work for the construction management phase services for the project as well as the engineering services that we would be needing from Brown and Caldwell throughout the construction phase of the project. And as we have done with this project, the city's been very careful to not enter into contracts and have expenditures on, on a, on a phase of the project that hasn't been determined that it's, were there yet. So for instance, that construction management cost wasn't fully known until we got closer to the final point of going out to bid for the project. So we've recently gone through the qualification and RFP process for those construction management services and those costs are better known now and that's a portion of the increase of the $2 million. Along with Brown and Caldwell's contract is for design services up to the point of project bid. And then after that, upon award of a contract, Brown and Caldwell needs to be retained for engineering, engineering services throughout the design or throughout the construction of the project. So that's another portion of the increase that totals $2 million.
But that's, that's right. That, that, that increase of $2 million is, is, is all CM, it's all construction management. All, all, all construction management and design engineer and project management costs incurred during construction, right? That $2 million incurred.
Correct. And, but also it does reflect some additional cost of the project management consultant that we've retained for the duration of the project. There was an increase in their, in their cost to continue that project management.
Okay. I just, I'm, I'm trying to understand all of the different components for increases and rather go through it. Let me, let me just go on. There were, if I remember correctly, there were seven contractors which were pre-qualified by the city for this project, right?
Correct.
How many bid?
Four.
Do we know why, if my mental math is correct at this hour, do we know why the others did not bid?
Not any real.
Three did not bid?
Specific indication. Some information was gathered that one of the other contractors was a team of, of two contractors that teamed up. One of those contractors was, was successful on a bid that they were pursuing and were awarded a contract and decided that they couldn't continue with.
Okay.
Entertaining and putting a bid in on this project. The, the bidding process is extensive and takes a significant amount of investment for a contractor to put a bid, bid together. So I'm sure the other contractors weighed that along with their existing contracts and commitments and decided not to bid.
Do we know, well, in the staff report, let me deal with this. In the staff report, there was a comment made about the operation of the treatment facility, but the staff report is very specific saying it's going to be performed through a contract operations company, correct?
That's correct.
So it won't be city employees. It'll be, it'll be an operations, independent contractor that will be performing the work there?
That's correct.
How long are the bids good for?
60 days.
60 days from?
Bid opening.
Oh, I'm sorry. What was that, December 5?
Fourth.
That was one day off. Okay. All right. And we don't know yet about the, we, we have not yet heard about the Bureau of Reclamation grant funding, correct?
That's correct.
And that $12 million, $12 million plus dollars that, if it's received, potentially that could be received over a three, is it over a, it's a multi-year period, right? Over a three-year period, is it?
No, it's, right now, the amount of money that's available for this grant dispersment by the federal government, yeah, I believe it's up to, is $18 million. And that's what's available for them to disperse at this point. And the, almost $13 million is based on, the, the grant can be up to a 25% of the total project cost. So that's what identifies the, at the time of our bid submission or, or application, 25% of our total project cost was roughly almost $13 million. So that's the maximum amount of award they could give out of that $18 million. So it's unlikely that we would get the full $13 million. We don't expect all of it. However, with this Water Smart Desalination Grant Program is if the federal government and it's expected, they've announced that they'll be coming out with another funding opportunity is what they call on an annual basis to say there's going to be X amount of more money available for this grant program and our project will qualify to receive additional funding in the next year dispersment. So if we don't get the full $13 million now, our application stays and, and we can, it's not a reapply, but basically we're, we're pre-approved essentially, if you will, for additional funding if, if it can be, if they decide to award it to our project also. And I will add that our existing total project costs going from 54 to 70, that's what the grant is based on. So essentially a quarter of 70 million, which I think is 17,500,000, would be the new maximum grant award, 25% of 70 million.
No, I was just doing the mental math.
So our additional, there, there could be capacity for additional grant award in the future. Again, if funds are available through the federal government towards this program. But we understand that the next funding opportunity is going to be coming out this early this next year.
Okay. And staying with the project funding theme, the staff report talks about the possibility of financing and uses a $25 million figure. And this is the first time we have seen anything regarding a potential debt service, incurring of debt service by the city for the project. So obviously that's significant. But I want to key on a sentence that you have in here. It says at the bottom of page five, "To fund the total project cost of $70 million without the federal grant, an additional $9 million in water utility funds and financing of approximately $25 million would be required." So I guess my question is if, do I take the $16 million figure? The $16 million, if I understand your math right, is, is the increase from $54 million to $70 million in the project? And do I then add to that the $9 million that the city would not obtain in grant funds? And that's how we got to the $25 million debt, potential debt figure?
Yes.
Okay.
That's correct.
Okay. If the city were to issue debt for all or a portion of that, of the project, would you anticipate water rates going up at least in part to fund? The staff report talks about solely, you know, it's not going up solely because of this, but would you anticipate water rates going up to fund that debt service? And if so, how significant do you think those might be?
Well, based on the figures for the funding reimbursement through the.
Local resources program?
Local resources program, the LRP. Because that figure is significant at approximately 1.2 million, we would look to use those revenues to offset debt service.
So you dedicate that, this would be like a revenue issue, a revenue debt issuance?
Well, you would, you would issue revenue bonds, but this reimbursement would fund operating costs and reduce the need for significant rate increases. So yes, if you were not receiving this funding and you were issuing debt, you would see rate increases to cover the debt service.
Would you pledge that local resource program incoming funds to pay that debt?
I think you would factor that into the calculations for debt service coverage in issue, going through the bond issuance process.
Okay. Can you, Dave, can you go to the slide on the redesign or potential redesign? It's one of the last couple of slides.
With the list of options?
Yeah, next steps, I think it is. Okay, redess, possible redesign options. Can you chat a little bit about what, based on your knowledge as of right now, which is, you know, we don't have a complete picture, but what we might potentially save by virtue of deletion of some of those components?
Right. Right, so, in consultation with the design engineer Brown and Caldwell, the estimate is on the changing of the wall type, approximately savings of $800,000 from that. And then, real rough estimation on the reduction in size of the administration building, primarily looking at the education center and the conference room, a reduction of, I think that's roughly about 1,100 square feet off the 6,500 square feet. Their estimate is another roughly $800,000 reduction on that. So, from those two, the estimated reduction possibly, and again, recurring or requiring a redesign and a rebid of a possible total of 1.6 million reduction.
And I apologize because you went through this ground before, but the reduction in the size of components for future capacity expansion, why is that not recommended?
Well, for the cost that it would take to redesign, extensive redesign of quite a few of the components of the treatment plant, it's really only expected to generate a potential cost savings of $500,000. And the extensive amount of redesign in that would, you know, just not offset with that cost, not provide a significant amount, significant amount of savings.
How many, I'm not going to ask this right. How thick is the project book? How many sheets of project detailed specs is, are there with regard to the piping, the piping capacity and so on?
Well, I don't have the exact number. The total plan set is 407 sheets of drawings.
Over 400 sheets of drawings?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. I think that's all, that's all the questions I have for the moment. Thanks.
Anybody else have any questions?
I just have one.
That's great.
I'll have comments later, but this is a question. You showed a map at one time, and it showed the two water basins and the area that would be prime, I think you called it, or best to remove the water from. That looks like a large mound of water, the red or the orange, and then the yellow is the eligible area for removing that water or pumping it out. When is the last time that we had that modeled to determine how much water was in that mound?
So, initial modeling occurred early in 2000s, and then, over time, it's been reconfirmed. And most, most recently, the last couple of years was when the modeling was relooked at, as this project has continued, especially with the development of the approval from Fox Canyon, verifying potential impacts to the basin, the calculations were revisited. So, I don't have the exact date, but somewhere around 2015 timeframe as we were approaching.
And as we've gone along, has that mound increased or decreased or stayed the same or what?
Levels have fluctuated as far as water levels, especially with the impacts of the drought. So, I don't know that there's a significant amount of increase or decrease. So, I don't have, yeah, I don't have any further information on that.
But we're fairly certain that the water's still there?
Oh, yeah, correct.
Okay.
I wanted to, can we go back to the, the slide for the redesign? I just wanted to go back down because we, Mr. Tremblay asked you about the amount of potential savings, but I wanted to keep going down so that we also see the cost of the redesign.
Oh, sorry.
Just so, and we don't know if that's exactly the amount.
Correct, this is a really rough estimate, and providing this item for consideration to counsel tonight, if the choice was made to enter into amendment with Brown and Caldwell upon action tonight, our real rough estimate to do this redesign of all four elements would possibly be in the $500,000 range, with further details of exact scope and cost to be determined upon further information.
Okay, so, the, with the, the, excuse me, the change of the wall and the change in the admin building, if they were a savings of $800,000 each, that's 1.6 minus, so we're looking minus the 500 approximately, so we're looking about a potential of a million if these numbers are right?
Correct.
Okay. And then, a question about the, the potential expandability later on, because I'm learning a lot about Fox and how allocations are done. So, would you explain a little bit for me and for anybody else watching that we, if we wanted to expand to be able to treat more water, we can't just do that on our own? So, you know, that, how that's determined?
Correct. So, again, I'll back up to the original concept of that determination of how much water is down there. The calculations showed that 9,000 acre feet could be pumped. Initially, the concept was over 25 years. So, the city took a look at that and through working with Fox Canyon to eventually end up at a, at a project that would be approved by them, it was downsized to the 4,500 acre feet. The other part of the, going with the 9,000 acre feet would have been some type of a joint effort with, with another water purveyor or possibly the farmers nearby to be able to utilize some of that water that the city would pump. However, there's very strict restrictions on the city pumping and treating that water and selling it outside of our service area. So, there's, there's restrictions through LAFCO on, on not being able to do that. So, with those restrictions to fully utilize the 9,000 acre feet, plus the hesitancy of the Fox Canyon to allocate that much when they're currently undergoing a groundwater sustainability plan effort to take a look at how much can really be pumped from the basin without impacting it, they've landed on and agreed to the 4,500 acre foot amount of allocation that satisfies the city's needs. However, then we continued on with our project with the approach of possibly in the future, if it's determined that 9,000 acre foot allocation total would be acceptable, that our plant could be expanded to be able to treat that. And, and that would more than likely need to be a team effort with another agency coming in, whether it's Fox Canyon or another group of agencies maybe, that would say they want to invest in tapping into that water, additional 4,500 acre feet, if it's approved to be able to be pumped, which is questionable at this point with what we're seeing with the development of the groundwater sustainability plan.
Thank you. And the last thing, I wanted to ask you also to explain what LEED certification is. I understand that it is a way to make buildings and development more sustainable, but can you explain a little bit more about what that, what the implications are for construction and development, and then how that played into the grants that we?
Correct, yeah, so the LEED certification is exactly that, to implement energy efficiency more sustainable from, from the types of materials that are used. There's a whole realm of items that can go into achieving LEED certification for improving efficiency on the energy side, even, even down to the type of materials that are used throughout. For instance, one of the items that is used to achieve that is on the ability to percolate stormwater. So, we've got permeable pavers as a part of our LEED element on, in the parking area. The solar power on top of our covered parking area is also an element going in towards LEED. So, again, creating a sustainable energy savings and, and those kinds of things are all, and various others that I don't have the exact details on, that have been incorporated into our design. And one of the benefits of that is in our grant applications, we essentially get points in our favor for showing those types of efforts for implementing LEED certification elements of the project. So, that's one of the reasons why not recommendation to, to remove or reduce that LEED certification. While the, the cost savings would be relatively minor, it may have impacts to our grant applications.
Thanks, that's all I have.
Okay, who else? Mr. Moshe?
Dave, I want to get back to what Tony was talking about, plant capacity. As a design, as it stands right now, this design incorporates the 9,000 acre feet per year capacity in terms of the pipes underground. Is that correct?
That's correct, for the, yes, for the underground elements, the pipes, and there's some storage tanks also that are underground.
And you're saying that if we were to downsize that to the actual capacity of the plant, once it came into operation at 4,500 acre feet, we'd only see a savings of $500,000 approximately?
Approximately, correct.
If 10, 20 years down the road, we were able to get permission to pump at a higher capacity of 4,500, let's say, the 9,000 acre feet, ballpark figure in today's dollars, what would that cost us to, I guess, put in that infrastructure or change the infrastructure? And would that, would that impact capacity of the plant?
So, well, if you're asking what it would cost to implement the entire capacity increase to go to the 9,000 acre feet, including the larger upsizing of the underground things and then the additional treatment facilities and filtration?
Actually, I'm just, just sticking on the pipes underground.
Okay. Yeah, that's, you know, probably a million or two more. And I know previously had been mentioned that, and what I was getting at is the total cost to implement that upgrade is more likely $15 million to go, that increased capacity all the way to the 9,000 acre feet.
Okay. Can we get back to the land cost? Mr. Tremblay had gone through a lot of the other increases in costs, but could you touch on the land cost and why that increased $600,000 since August?
Let me just get to my notes on that. So, right, the previous estimate that we had in August was $1,084,000, no, I'm sorry, And that was based on the, the known purchase price that we are going to enter into, plus some additional costs to get to that point, essentially consultants and appraisals and that kind of thing. We've actually have purchased that property, and the total cost to do that, plus some additional costs that we've incurred, we're right now at expenditure of 1.3 million so far. So, we've actually got real-time additional costs of roughly about $150,000, and then expected additional costs to, to complete the acquisition of an easement across the church property, which we were working on right now, and those, there are going to be additional costs to, to secure those easements, and that's where we've estimated those additional costs, a part of that $600,000. There have also been some additional costs included since the time of the estimate, after we've worked out the details with the relocation of the strawberry stand at the access point location. So, we've, you know, there are costs involved with that, so we've summarized that and estimated increase of $600,000 over that original estimate.
That's all I got right now.
That it? All right, any other questions?
Yes.
No questions, okay. How about comments? Any comments, Ms. Graven?
Well, in the past 30 years or so, I've seen ups in the economy and downs in the economy and through several cycles. I've seen economic downs when contractors were really hungry and we either built new or majorly rebuilt two sewage treatment plants at a whole lot less than the engineers' estimates. And that made us very happy. On the other hand, I've seen some economic ups when we've had to either cut or severely cut how many streets we were going to resurface, surface, because the bids came in so much higher than we expected. And that didn't make us too happy, but I've never seen anything that quite went up like I don't know what happened to these estimates that, that they came in so much higher, but right now, the economy isn't just up, it's booming. In spite of what you hear on TV, our economy is booming. I've been to two talks by economists in the last three, four months where they talk about how unemployment's at a historic low. Employees are, employers are begging for people to come to work for them. And I've heard two economists say that if you don't have a job right now, it's because you either don't want a job or you have, you don't have any marketable skills. And when you add that to the fact that we've had a year ago, which at the time was the largest fire the state had ever had, now it's been downgraded to the third largest fire the state's ever had, and then we have another fire, we have people who are subcontracting for things like masonry, drywall, plaster, all the things that they're talking about here. You just can't find them. If you want to hire these people, you stand in line, and if you hire them, they're charging a lot of money, because this is all a supply and demand game. But as we went along, we also allowed this project to become gold-plated. We moved it twice. Once, we read, added some things that cost a lot of money because of what the neighbors said to make the neighbors happy, and then the neighbors weren't happy, so we moved it on to school property. If we were going to buy property from the school or lease it, we had to add the classrooms and different things that the school wanted, and then that didn't work out, so we moved it again. But we never took out the things that the previous people had wanted. We kept all this. And one of those things is a perimeter fence around five acres that, that's really a gold-plated fence. And so, I think what we need to do is go back and, and look at all this. But I also have to say that I think that the cost of equipment has gotten a lot higher than it was when we first started talking about this project, not in August, but, but when we were talking about it a few years ago. There have been a lot more desalinization plans built, and as more and more plants are built, I, I think the equipment is becoming more costly. So, I don't understand why the bids came in higher than, so much higher than it was anticipated. But I have to say, I'm not prepared to pay $70 million for a desal plant that I thought was going to cost a whole lot less. I do support rejecting all bids and getting rid of what I'm calling the gold plating and bringing in a more reasonable project to us, a reasonably priced project. And I want to be really clear, I support deleting the conference room, the lobby, the education room, the public restrooms, we'll keep the other set, the front office, and any other things inside that administration building that can be moved elsewhere. I support getting rid of the bell tower. We certainly don't need a bell tower on a water treatment plant that's in the middle of a field. And I support a much, much cheaper type of perimeter wall going around it.
Okay, anybody else? Mr. Tremblay, Jack?
Comments, and then I'm prepared to do a motion.
All right.
Okay, so.
Why don't we all make our comments?
Yeah, let me just. Three basic comments. First is that, as far as I'm concerned, the best course here is to, is to reject all bids, so as not to subject the city to potential litigation concerning bids and bid protests, et cetera. Second comment is that I can't support the first option in terms of the suggested form of motion on a not to exceed amount of $500,000. I can support option number two, which is to come back with a far more refined proposal from the consultant that has a lot more specificity and staff using a very, very sharp pencil to negotiate that agreement. And thirdly, and my third comment, and then I'm ready to make a motion at the appropriate time, I also expect that, based on the recent bids.
time, I also expect that based on the recent bids, there is some improved cost estimating as far as both A, the capital construction cost of the project, and B, the annual operation and maintenance costs for the project. Ultimately, before I make a decision on this, one way or the other, in terms of the overall project, because it seems like it may come back to us in a few months, I, I just have got to have confidence in these numbers and their transparency. And the numbers have been evolving dramatically. I mean, to, not to put too fine, but they've been increasing, right? They've been going up. So I just, I have got to have some more confidence in them. So I'm ready for, I'll write, I'll make a motion at the appropriate time.
Any other comments? Mr. Moshe?
Well, in reading the, the engineer's estimate from, from the consultant, you know, this is classified as a class one estimate, and there's usually a deviation within some agreements, or this own estimate states negative 10% to plus 15%. And by my math, this is 25%. It's, it's not acceptable and we shouldn't accept it. It's definitely too much money. We need to go back to the drawing board, so to speak. I do support option two. I did have a questioner, Mr. Klotzel, and that is if we, if we did pursue a redesign, what would the timeline be? And second part, does that put any of our grant money in jeopardy?
So again, it's going to be a real rough estimate because developing that timeline will be a part of if council decides to go forward with the redesign. And our, our job then is to finalize the scope and schedule with Brown and Caldwell for these elements. But it'll be anywhere from at least four months, four to six, to possibly even eight months until we're back at this point after rebidding and ready to award the project. So unfortunately, I can't put a better timeframe on it for you than that. As far as delays to the project go and, and schedule on the grants, so right now, we're under an agreement with the one grant for the $5 million. And that agree, even now with the, if we would award tonight, with the 24-month schedule, we would need to have that grant extended also, you know, for that period. So we're just going to have to extend that even further. And staff has gotten indication that it's possible to extend that grant so that we're not in jeopardy of losing those funds.
Yeah. I just want to add, you know, I'm, I'm in the cabinet business, so I was looking at the estimates from, from the bidders. And you're right, the administration building is, is two, if not three times, depending on who the bidder is, two to three times more expensive than what the engineer's estimate was. And doing custom cabinetry and being in people's homes and dealing with drywallers and all the other subcontractors, I can't for the life of me rationalize why that cost would be as high as it is. It just, it doesn't compute, it does not make sense to me. But to that end, I think we do need to look at, at paring down the wall. I think we do need to look at paring down the building and saving as much money to the taxpayers as we possibly can.
This is, this is, this is tough in a way because I, I believe we need the disalter. And I know that even at this, this higher cost at the 70 million mark, over 20 years, it is still a significant savings to us. But that doesn't mean that, that we should go ahead and just approve the 70 million. I too, I am not in this business, but I know a huge, significant difference between what an estimate and what it comes through. And I'm, just like everybody else, having trouble getting my, wrapping my head around. I understand supply and demand and I, I understand construction costs. And I think what, what you said was, was really true, especially about what's happening right now with so many things being rebuilt. But that being said, I also think that the, the design has turned into things that we don't need. I, we don't need that, that fence, we don't need the bell tower. So I, I agree with, with what's being said here. So, and I'm looking at ways to, to, even though I, I support doing this and it may be expensive, I still want us to look at ways to get that cost down.
I'm the last, so I'll make my comments brief. I know when the engineering estimate came in, I thought personally that it was on the low side, especially in the economy, that was said. The economy, any bids are coming in, not just here, but a lot of our bids, a lot of other public agencies are coming in a lot higher than what the estimates are. It's, you know, it's, it's timing is everything in this. And when you have a unique project where you don't have a lot of comps to really compare with, you know, oftentimes, you know, the, the estimates come in higher. This is a lot higher though. So I do support, you know, when you're ready to make the budget here, maybe we can plop some of the, the costs. But I think in the long term, that, that if we can make all these numbers work, this would be a very beneficial project. So with that.
I'm ready to do. Mr. Tremblay?
I move that the city council, number one, reject all bids received. And number two, direct staff to return to the city council for consideration of an amendment to the agreement with Brown and Caldwell for redesign of the project as directed by the city council. Number three, in that redesign, incorporate the following elements. A, replace the perimeter block, ah, let me try that again. Replace the perimeter block wall with a slatted privacy fence. B, to decrease the size of the administration building by deleting the following components. A, education center. B, the lobby. C, the conference room. D, public restrooms. E, bell tower, the bell tower. And combining office space as appropriate with the break room and incorporating other elements of the administration building as appropriate into the shop area of the facility. And finally, C, make other value engineering modifications as appropriate to further reduce the capital construction costs of the project.
Motion to adjourn.
I suppose we should say something. Does that include the exterior? Not just the bell tower, but some of the features that cost more in the exterior? Do we need to mention them?
You're talking about exterior finish?
Yes, of the building, admin building.
Yeah, that, that would be assumed in the redesign.
Okay.
Kind of had that in the value engineering part, but.
Just wanted to make sure.
Correct. I, I took it as that.
All right.
Is it second? I'll second it.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote. All right, that passes unanimously. Okay. Thank you, everyone. With no further business, we're adjourned.